Everyone wants to find a seat, we'll call to order the meeting of the Morgan County Council for February. Do I call, call your out, tell him to sit down? I need a gavel. We'll call this meeting to order.
I thought you'd be out on bypass.
We thank you all for showing up this evening. We've got a busy agenda, so we'll get started. Can I ask Jason to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Vicki, would you mind leading some prayer? If you all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and this opportunity to meet in a public place where we can conduct county business and not have to, that we have the opportunity to meet in public and conduct business. And dear Lord, we don't often just stop and say thank you for so much that you place in our lives on a daily basis. We do know that there are people that are hurting in one way or another. We know that there's people that are sick, who need bodies healed, who need mental health issues addressed, who have financial worries and dealing with addictions. We just thank you for your healing power, dear Lord, and ask that you reach it out to wherever it's strongly needed. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this county, our growth, and what we have been in the past. And we just pray that you be with us in all these things. Amen.
Yes, we do. Welcome back, Keith. Glad to see ya. Right. Let the record show that all council members are in attendance. We have meeting minutes from the December 5th, the December 19th, and January 3rd meetings. Has everyone had a chance to review those and go over them? Any questions or changes? Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Troy Sprinkle will make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Melissa Green will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero on approval of the minutes. We're going to move into our first additional appropriation for 2023. At least we made it through January, right? So...
As required by law.
All right, Cumulative Capital Development Fund. We're going to have the Sheriff and Commander Rogers come up and explain this to us. Gentlemen, good to see you both.
Yes. I know it's early to be coming in asking for money, but we're asking for money. This is money that we actually had in our budget and obviously our budgets got kind of all mixed around in different funds. So during that process, it was missed that forty-two thousand for equipment repair and maintenance was not put back into the budget after it was moved into different line items. And then the same case with our sixty-five thousand for computer equipment. So we're just asking to get that funded since it got missed.
Okay. And we did have a couple of those, I think, that were moved and we were looking to move them and then they...
Dan had also sent the email where that was...
Yeah, he did.
Overlooked item.
Did anyone have any questions on those two items?
I don't know if that microphone got taller or I got shorter. Usually it's not that high, it doesn't seem.
No questions?
Yeah.
I look for a motion.
Melissa Green will make the motion to transfer the funds, the forty-two thousand and the sixty-five thousand dollars over to the QM cap development fund. Is that, wait, yes. To the county jail.
We have a motion to approve the additional appropriation of a hundred and seven thousand.
Jason Maxwell seconds.
Thank you, Jason. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like us to take a moment and recognize the eminent Lady Eels for their sectional win. Since how long?
That's awesome. That's great.
Well wishes back to your community, Sheriff.
Great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item is another additional appropriation for the PSAT Personnel Fund. Scott, you gonna go over that one with us?
As you know, we changed the way dispatch was funded with Martinsville's change of the interlocal agreement. And we moved to that Lloyd fund and basically apparently two supervisor positions, which were in the salary ordinance, there actually was one extra supervisor position in the salary ordinance, which is on farther down the agenda that's going to get removed. But two of the positions that were in there for supervisors got missed or left out.
So this one twenty-seven four represents two shift supervisor positions?
Yep, two shift supervisor positions, and then the perf and the FICA that go along with those positions. Get those back.
Okay.
Enough money to pay those folks. That's about my wealth of knowledge.
That's all right. We understand it. Okay.
There was a lot of shifting and I'm going to be back next month to discuss with you about my contractual services budget. There's some, we found some problems there that we'll address and I'll send you a nice email with everything. Try to explain as best I can.
Okay. Are there more of these that we're going to have?
I hope not, but as we find them.
Okay.
And according, and I remember what Dan told me, right, this is basically out of the forty-nine fifteen account, it was the money that Martinsville paid in, it can't be used really for anything other than dispatch, and it's just surplus money that was already there to begin with, so that's where it's coming from.
We do, we do have one for the commissioners that we found, it was too late that had already been said.
Okay, all right.
So what was the explanation? I didn't hear that, so?
In the shifting of the budgets...
Yes.
Got dropped.
Okay.
So they're, they're in the salary ordinance?
Okay.
But they just were not in the budget.
Got it.
Okay, so we have a total of one hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars that represents two shift supervisor positions that were on the salary ordinance, but got dropped in the budget, along with their perf and FICA totaling that one fifty-one four twenty.
Be correct, yes.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Melissa Green will make the motion to move one hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred twenty dollars from said accounts into the PSAT Personal Fund for EMS, yes, EMS.
Transfer.
Wait, FICA, sorry, did I say it wrong?
Well, it's an additional, not a transfer.
Oh, it's, oh, it's, okay, I see, sorry. So yes, I will make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the additional of one fifty-one four twenty. Kim Meredith will second the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much. Folks, have a nice evening.
You too. All right, now we'll move on to transfers. County Highway, Grant? Good evening.
Hi, Grant.
This, I, I'm not going to be able to really speak as far as the logistics of exactly why this needed to be moved to this. I mean, that's more the auditor telling me that it needed to be there. I, I'll just be honest with you, I, I mean, but this is a project on bottom road that we're doing the land acquisition. It's an appraisal that the court sent us a bill for, you know, they're working that.
Okay.
And Linda, you want to jump in and explain kind of how and why we had to do that?
Well, I see the email that references it, but it is a little confusing.
They didn't have a line item for property acquisition.
Right.
So he had to transfer it out of his contractual services.
Okay, to create that and then we'll address what it was for, okay.
We knew there was going to be a cost, so we put it in contractual services, me thinking I'd be able to pay it out of there, speaking with the auditor.
So this is really just a cleanup to...
It is.
Yeah, I get that.
So that we can proceed and get this bill paid to the court.
Right, so it's not a, it's not an additional, we're just, he's just transferring funds that would not fit for the contractual services. He needs a line item for right-of-way acquisition, so... So it's just a transfer of the thirty-four thousand one hundred. Any questions?
Chip Keller will make a motion to approve the thirty-four thousand one hundred from contractual services to right-of-way acquisition.
Troy Sprinkle second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Grant. All right, and we're going to move on down to twenty twenty-three Salary Ordinance Amendment. So we have, looks like a few things there to address. The Sheriff Merit Board increased pay from forty-five to seventy-five per meeting. Is there any explanation on that or need be? You're just going to give them more money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've not had to raise, since the time that I've been in there, I don't think they had to raise quite some time before that even. And we spoke about this also during, during the process of budget time, and I think it was left out also, kind of, but...
How often do they meet?
It just depends on if we have business. If we don't have any business, we don't meet.
So it's not like a monthly meeting every month?
No, we have monthly meetings, but if there's nothing on the agenda to go over, we don't necessarily meet. So last year was like maybe six times at the most that we had, yeah.
I was just trying to get an idea how often it happens.
Yep. It is scheduled monthly, but if there's nothing going on, I just cancel it and move it to the next one.
Okay. All right. Did anyone have any questions in regard to that? So it's an increase of from forty-five dollars per meeting to seventy-five dollars per meeting.
Remind me how many members?
There's three by me, two by the deputies, so five.
Five.
Yes.
Are they all paid?
Yes.
Or some of them by virtue of their office? They're all paid?
Yes, yeah, so there's, yeah, I mean, they're, they're all paid for meeting, whenever we have the meeting, yes.
Some of our boards have, like the surveyors on by virtue of their office, those type things.
I don't get paid.
In that way.
No, 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 there's nobody on there that that's that way.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Troy Sprinkle will make the motion to do the increase from forty-five to seventy-five.
Vicki Kivett makes a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the increase from forty-five to seventy-five per meeting, specify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Dari, are you going to address the next one? Park and Recreation Part-Time Position Maintenance Labor should be Maintenance Equipment Operator? Was it just a...
It was just an oversight. When it was put in, there wasn't an official title. And what was approved by the council when we brought the job description to you and to the Maintenance Committee was the Maintenance slash Equipment Operator. So it's just a change to reflect the correct job title.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? Okay, anyone? I look for a motion to approve the change in part-time position.
Chip will make, Chip Keller will make that motion to approve that name change.
Thank you, Chip. We have a motion.
Brian Culp will make that second.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Poor Brian, you're starting to get my eyes down there, like, somebody give me a second. All right, Recorder.
These are just two cleanups here. The Recorder, Chief Deputy Account Number. The person in the Chief Deputy's position, she moved up from Bookkeeper. So the one-one-two-one-six was the Bookkeeper's number. We just need to clean that up, change that.
Okay.
To reflect Chief Deputy.
Okay, so let's take, we'll take them one by one then. The Recorder Account, changing that from the one-one-two-one-six Chief Deputy should be Account one-one-two-zero-zero. No, Bookkeeper to Chief Deputy, right? Because they say, they both say Chief Deputy.
Yes, the salary ordinance says Chief Deputy, but it just has the Bookkeeper's account number.
Okay, so the one-one-two-one-six was the Bookkeeper Account Number. Gotcha, I'm with you.
Chip Keller will make the motion to approve that account number correction.
Thank you, Chip.
Sprinkle second.
Thank you, Troy. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, lit, dedicated, go ahead.
This goes back to Scotty. We have one extra supervisor, supervisor position. We just need to remove that one from the salary ordinance.
Okay. So an adjustment on the salary ordinance to remove one supervisor position.
From three to two then, right? Vicki Kivett makes a motion.
Jason Maxwell seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. County Commissioners Discuss Need For Property Acquisition Line. There, we're coming back to it, aren't we?
Yes.
Full circle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you all this year. So in your packet, you have some pictures of a dump truck turned on its side.
Yeah.
So as Grant talked about, we did a transfer for some eminent domain that we were making use of to clean up this corner, which is a pretty nasty corner. But the real issue is we've had an obstinate landowner that continued to put debris up to the side of the road because, by golly, his, his land all the way to the other edge of the road and don't come onto my property. So he would put things up against the side of the road when we were plowing. All that snow and ice froze and we hit it and it threw us off the road. We used to have a line item for, you know, as far as I understand, years and years before I was here, it was just a hundred thousand dollars, always just a standing appropriation. Should we have issues like this come up, the commissioners always already had a bucket of money that they could use. I don't think it was used very often, but the council advocated a few years ago to remove that. Thankfully, the highway was able to take care of it this time. But had they not been able to, we had a court order that we needed to scramble to pay. And we just, we think this is a unique opportunity to come back before you and say, hey, we do think that there's some real wisdom to having that line item there, and we just want to talk to you guys about that and see if that's something the council is open to. It doesn't have to be a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I'd be...
They've been using, I mean, I know they've been dealing with this particular corner a lot longer than the last two years.
How much did that corner cost us?
The thirty-four thousand dollars that, now, we have to build it and we're going to have to reconstruct it. But to acquire that was the transfer you guys took care of tonight.
I got you.
And at a hundred thousand, I mean, we're not going out and buying houses. There's not many things you're going to buy great, you know, substance for a hundred thousand dollars, but it gives us some flexibility.
I thought you guys had something in there like real estate. You had a real estate line item or something.
It got taken out.
Totally out?
Couple, was it this year or two years ago? We had, we asked to put it back in this year and...
And we didn't?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
So we're back.
I thought I was still in there too.
Yeah, something made me think it was.
I'd certainly be willing to talk about it. I'd be willing to talk about it at budget time, though. We can do it for next year.
Absolutely.
Do we know why it got taken out in the first place?
Didn't use it?
We were trying to...
No particular council person.
Right, anywhere that they, we could cut.
They hadn't used it.
Yeah, we get it.
I guess I'm surprised that somebody can put obstacles up that would turn over a snowplow.
So is that what this is right here?
It's a log?
And he swerved to miss, swerved to miss it to the right and then ended up in the...
No, it was buried in the snow and it had frozen to the ground. And so it was like, you know, hitting a solid rock when they hit it, and so it kicked them off the side.
Poor guy.
So like Brian said, we don't need an answer tonight, but this is, we wanted to bring this to you guys' attention. We would really love consideration at budget time.
Yeah.
To put this back in.
We, we understand that and, okay. Appreciate that. And our local terminations, do you want to address that while you're up there? It's next.
Yep. So process has started quite a while ago. Some of you may be familiar with it. I know Jason is, being on the plane commission, but not all of you may be. The commissioner started the process to abolish all the buffer zones. We rolled it out over a long period of time. The municipalities have really done a great job of working with us through that transition. The mayor's office has been a real great for us to work with. And the termination of all that ends with some interlocal agreements that allowed the planning and zoning of each jurisdiction to execute, really the municipalities to work outside of their municipal limits. So we take those back, we don't need those interlocals anymore. But both the commissioners and the council are party to those agreements. So we executed the removing of the, or the termination of the interlocals this morning. And it's up to you guys to finish that process, and once that's done, then we're officially done with all buffer zones.
Okay, so you need us to vote this evening to continue the process of the interlocal agreement terminations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your resolution?
With you guys, okay.
There's four of them, one for each of the communities, and you're just approving the, essentially the termination of the interlocal.
Right.
Yeah, we do them all at once or did you do them individually?
We did them individually. No, we did them as one, that's right.
A, B, C, D.
Okay. Well, let's address that now while it's in front of us. Are there any questions, qualms? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
I'll make that a motion to approve, or yeah, to approve the termination of all four of the interlocal agreements with said communities.
Jason Maxwell seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. I'm glad that's finally taken care of. Yep, good job, guys. All right, Special Duty Incentive Pay Ordinance. Is Dave still here? You had to wake him up. I don't, have, has everybody had a chance to look this over? I think Dave's going to kind of explain it to us, but as you recall, at budget time, there was the presentation, and correct me if I'm wrong in the way I'm presenting. It is taller, isn't it?
I thought it was just me. Well, they say the older you get, the shorter you get.
I think it's true. I think I'm shrinking.
Yeah.
You go right ahead, Dave. Explain kind of where it came and where we're at and...
Okay, so when we came at budget time, we had presented a proposal to do a special duty incentive. We didn't really have a name for it. That's what it ended up being called throughout this. It's a special duty incentive pay, which was basically to benefit staff that went above and beyond, such as SWAT teams, CERT teams, the different specialty groups that we have within the sheriff's office, or also for education, such as a college degree. So we had proposed that for all staff. The auditor's office had a different interpretation, and so that brings us here today to try to rectify that and get more clarification, because there wasn't a lot of discussion about it at budget time other than getting approved. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We've talked to some of you to try to clarify what our intent was. The education side of that obviously is for recruiting purposes, mostly because it's helped us start recruiting people that's got a higher education and, and retaining those folks as well, so.
I think, I think if you folks will look, this is a pretty common practice with police departments across the state right now because of the job openings that we have and the lack of people that are putting in for this. The last Indiana State Police class had a graduation of eleven people when they graduated about a month ago. When I graduated, we had thirty-seven, so you can tell by the numbers that it's coming down. And a lot of agencies are giving you different amounts for the different things that you have. So they'll give you a thousand dollars if you're on specialty team. They'll give you another thousand dollars or fifteen hundred if you have an education. They'll give you another thousand dollars if shift differential. So they're stacking them. We didn't go that way. We just went across and worked with the three thousand dollars. If you, you could only get one, so if you have SWAT, you also have a college education, you're only getting that one-time bump. That bump can be taken away. If you get off of SWAT and you're no longer doing that specialty team because we're paying this out in the payments, instead of one lump sum at the beginning or end of the year, that can be cut off and taken away from you. So again, incentive, we're trying to get outside the box to say, hey, come here and look at us, stay with us, this is what. And if you make yourself better by doing something more above and beyond, you're going to get a little incentive to stay here and to be here. So we hope that maybe some of the other groups and places will also do that.
I know I was guilty of, at the time we were discussing this during the budget, in my mind, I was thinking it was deputies. It was a deputy incentive. And then when it came up on the first pay, that there were more than deputies included in that. I went back and looked at my budget notes and it did not stipulate, and even in my notes, I put down jail employees. So it, it did say jail employees on mine, and so I, I was guilty of assuming to, never assume. But, but it does need to be addressed because I, and what were the other, there was another issue on the pay because we're going to, there's not...
Just to correct the overtime rate to exclude it, I believe.
The ordinance does need to exclude from overtime rate, but we also have, you, you didn't request it for eleven-seventy jail or the work release. And we are paying six people in the jail in work release. And you guys, you transferred money over from correction officers and overtime to fix that.
Correct.
But we do need to amend the salary ordinance because they're not included in it.
Correct. So what actually happened, so initially... So initially, when we had planned this, we looked at how dispatch does their, they don't call it incentive pay, but they have some other pays for specialties that folks do up there and shift differentials, which we don't do those things. So because we wanted the flexibility to be able to take this away as needed or be able to give it, so if someone got a certification mid-year, we would like to have the flexibility. So our initial strategy was this, is keep one line item for incentive pay and just use that line item like they would at dispatch and pay out of that and use that fund. However, through a lot of movement within the budgets, Dan wanted to do it this other way, which is why we came for the salary ordinance originally. However, because our staff is throughout three different budgets, we didn't, when it got moved out of just being one fund by itself, it got moved into three different funds basically, but we didn't fund the other two funds when that got moved, if that kind of makes sense.
Clear as mud, isn't it?
So basically, you got people paid out of public safety that we only asked for initially in general fund, and then when it got moved, we didn't, no one thought about asking for the funds to be distributed over into, so it's the same amount of people, just in different pots of money. And we didn't ask, when it got moved from the initial strategy or what our thought process was to pay this out, didn't get moved into the other two funds.
And it's built into the hourly rate? Is that how?
Yes, it's a, basically it boils down, no matter what employee gets it, it's a dollar forty-four additional per hour, which is a hundred and fifteen something per pay.
But if there's overtime, that dollar forty-four isn't part of the overtime, as in it's not. I think I heard someone say that.
That, I believe, I think Jim got that in there, that it's not in the overtime rate.
And is this something that will reset annually? Is that the goal?
Well, we're reviewing it continuously because people come and go from those different programs or...
For example, you have somebody finishes a bachelor degree in 2023, so boom, there's three thousand. And then if, say if you decide or continue to go into 2024, they get their K nine, is that another three thousand?
No.
One time, period.
Period.
Okay.
Now, it's, so it is annual, so they'll continue, as long as they still participate with that team the next year, then it would be, it would continue the dollar forty-four. But never stack.
One three thousand dollars is maximum.
Good question, though.
Yeah. No, nothing would ever stack.
So what is our vote this eve, I mean, what is, what is it we're voting on? Just to continue as presented or, I mean, it's a special duty incentive pay ordinance? Do we just need to create an ordinance for it?
Well, Jim, I think Jim drafted an ordinance, just spelling out what the qualifications are to receive this.
Is that what you just sent down in front of us?
Yes, and I'm only pointing out, I don't know if it includes everything, but it needs to include description-wise, if at mine, but it's intended to at least be an working draft, maybe, maybe we need more direction, more attitude, or maybe we don't, I'm not sure of that.
Basically, I think what the clarification needs to be, our interpretation was all staff, regardless of position, matrix, not matrix, which this would encompass nurses, this would encompass any non-uniformed staff, I guess. And so that's what we're trying to clarify tonight. Our intent was, uniform or not, you, because we obviously, and we are starting to lose some of our administrative staff, which this is a benefit to recruiting to that as well. But, so we and the auditor's office needs clarification tonight whether the council is going to authorize the continued payment of those folks that are non-uniformed versus uniformed, or how you want to proceed with that. Our initial presentation was for all staff, not excluding anyone within our department.
Thank you. That helps.
If I'm an RN on the department, what can I do to increase, to receive this in a nursing position?
You wouldn't be able to increase it.
Okay.
Once you've obtained it, you, there's no additional.
If you come in as an RN though, there shouldn't be any additional incentive to, you mean, you're giving an incentive just because they hold that, whatever it may be, associates or...
If I come in off the street, I'm an RN, I'm walking through your door as an employee now.
You would be given the three thousand dollar extra.
Automatically.
Correct.
And that's again, the practice that's going across the state and the nation, is if you have this, if you have this qualification, they're giving you, Indiana State Police has given you a five thousand dollar, now if you graduate.
And every, I mean, plane, I mean, every agency is doing bonuses. We're, and we wanted to be able to take it away if needed. The only ones that is hard to take away is the education, because once you have it, you have it. However, those folks have invested a lot of money to obtain those educations and probably still paying for those educations, especially at a mid-level position such as ours when they're coming in, because we don't get seasoned nurses, I mean, Rachel, our current nurse, she came in as a very brand-new nurse, actually, and at that time, the pay wasn't what she could have made other places, but we had, you know, she was close relationship with our nurse that we had at that time, so we was able to recruit a nurse that way without having additional pay. But as we proceed, I mean, and some of these services are contractual, but we still have to be part of the recruiting, so, you know, even through mental health, that's, we're struggling getting mental health therapists. We have been through three of those and the pay, because the county contracts through that, through our correctional healthcare, however, we still kind of dictate what that pay is because we're paying the contract and we only agree to certain amounts of money. So even at that, it's getting tougher and tougher with these professional positions to maintain and recruit in there. So, you know, we've been able to get there, but it's getting tough. And that was kind of our thought process of this, is number one, a retention tool, number two, encouragement to go on specialty teams, because nothing says anyone has to be on the SWAT team. So if we don't do something, like volunteer firemen are having the same problem, like volunteer fire departments are going down to not really having any volunteers because there's, people don't volunteer like they used to. And these teams are volunteer teams, and education's a little bit different than that, but trying to recruit people in to these higher-level positions with an expectation that we have that professionalism is what our goal was.
It's incentive to better yourself.
Have you guys seen the draft of this? Yeah, so I'm thinking maybe...
I just glanced at it.
Just looked at it when it came in.
I'm thinking maybe we ought to just take this under advisement for this meeting and then make sure that they're good with what is on paper.
Correct. And face value, when I skimmed through it, it looks like Jim's got, the only thing that's not real clear, which is the biggest thing in question of, do we pay administrative staff or do we not? And I mean, he kind of covers that in there because it says, it doesn't say all, but it says Morgan County Sheriff's Department personnel, which I interpret as everyone at the sheriff's office, but it doesn't specifically say all Morgan County personnel.
So if someone is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a dollar figure that goes with? I mean, do we know what it's going to cost at this point right now? Is there a cost above and beyond what it is that we've already budgeted?
It has got us some numbers here.
You adopted a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, and right now with, and as David said, it is a moving target as people leave and come on. But right now, there are 55 people receiving, so that would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand for the year. Now, they did, with the transfers that they did, twenty-one thousand to that.
So we're ticking up to two hundred thousand dollars.
Right now, they're at one hundred and seventy-one thousand that they have appropriated.
I love the idea, but I know in my mind, I was thinking deputies and retaining them, bringing them on with education and giving incentives. I don't think I was thinking of everyone that has either an associate's, a bachelor's, or a master's, receiving additional pay on top of what's already given. I, my mind just wasn't going there. And I struggle a little bit with that one, just due to the fact that, in all fairness, and maybe this is something we address later at budget time with all departments, that there's some sort of incentive for that, but I just don't know that we have the funding is my fear.
I will tell you that this affects, so if you just leave the matrix people, which would be the jail officers that's uniformed and the deputies uniformed, you are affecting seven folks, I believe.
Seven folks?
Correct. And the reason we done education was specifically for this because it's limited what administrative staff could do, so there's only a couple of options that they could even get this through, one being education and the other one being our critical incident management team. So those...
So you're saying there's seven people outside of the matrix that would, that are currently receiving this?
You're looking at two full-time nurses and I believe three, maybe four clerical staff.
Twenty-one thousand.
I'm sorry?
Seven times three thousand, you're looking at twenty-one thousand.
So that's what is affected.
That's worst case, right? The twenty-one, if they all qualified, those extra seven qualify.
There currently would be one right now that does not qualify that's in that. So there'd be eight if you maxed out.
Okay.
So the budget line was?
One fifty.
One fifty.
Add the twenty-one, so one seventy-one, and it would be one sixty.
Right now, with 55 people receiving it, that would be one hundred and sixty-five thousand for the year.
And there's seven more that need to go on?
No, that's included.
Or they're included in that one sixty-five.
Those folks are already receiving this pay as we speak today.
Well, because...
So I think the question before us, do we want it to include just the matrix employees?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Or anyone within the jail that qualifies under that first section guideline in the ordinance? But, and if we want to table it and look at it a little closer and vote on it on, but I think we do have to address, do we tell Linda to go ahead and pay as it is, has it's been the last two pay periods or while we're reviewing it? Or, I mean, you guys tell me.
And how, how have they been paying?
All of them.
The fifty-five.
Yes.
Thoughts, comments?
Now, you do have some administrative people who sort of want to, do you have administrative employees?
Yes, that's the critical incident management team, yes.
So yes, there are some that share.
Yes, you may. This is a certification based on conversation. I just asked Jim to put together a form work. It's for you all to fill that out, so just use what Jim gave you as a template, not, I wouldn't use that as we're voting this up or down. You guys need to flesh that out.
Yeah, I think so too.
I make a motion that we'll table this for another month and get some more information from the auditor as far as tweaking some more figures and employee, and let me think about this.
Okay.
I like the idea, I do.
I'll second that.
Second the table. So all those in favor of tabling this until the March meeting?
And continuing paying as has been done.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion to table is passed.
So we are going to pay as...
As we have been so far, and they've been being paid as it's presented right now.
Okay, and then Jim's going to rework this a little bit to make sure and put...
I think Jim's wanting your input on that.
Yeah. So how do we, how do we come up with that agreement? So like...
We're going to have to delve into it a little bit and...
But do we have like a special meeting or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think right here in the moment, the sheriff's department...
Go on and come back next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Like section one, is that what we're talking about? We need to tweak or look at? Just the section one?
Yeah, that's who basically gets it.
That's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's going to get it? Is it going to be matrix employees or all employees?
Okay.
I mean, as it's written now, it's everybody that qualifies.
Can I ask one more question?
Sheriff's and jail department. Can you just talk about...
Just sheriff and jail, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Forgive me for being hard-headed or something. You hire me as a road deputy, January one, it is February now, and I say I want to go on the SWAT team. At what point am I eligible for the three thousand dollar bump?
Once you're accepted officially onto the SWAT team, you'll be eligible, so whatever that start date is, you would be eligible for that. So you don't get counterproductive back to January one to start.
Okay. So do you have folks sitting in the, sitting there right now that are eligible to get the three thousand bump right now?
Everyone that's eligible is getting it at this point.
Okay.
Fifty-five people.
Correct.
That's fifty-five people are eligible.
Yeah, and to clarify the three thou, so it's three thousand per year, but it does not mean that we, so if you start six months in, you're just going to start getting your dollar forty-four on. You're not going to get back paid, you're not correct.
It starts at one forty-four per hour and goes forward.
That is correct, yeah.
And if employee leaves to go to another job or whatever, it's cut off. Or if loser starts to get early, they don't live up to their certificate.
Do some of those positions require additional, like continuing education? So if that continuing education's not met and they don't continue that certification or it's not valid, then the dollar forty-four would come off.
Right, and that's an ongoing...
And you're the one, no pun intended, but policing that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And even education, we don't just take their, like, they have to present us their degree and their transcript, so we also make sure that who's getting it is getting a legitimate...
Do you have, like SWAT team, do you have a total number that you don't exceed to be on the SWAT team or just kind of anybody that wants to go through the training or certification can be on SWAT team?
No, they have to be, we have to have position available to open, and then they go before a board and a physical agility test also before they're given that position, and if no one beats that position, then no one's hired.
But you have a limit as far as how many people are on this one?
Like everybody can't be saying, oh, I'm going to be on SWAT now because I can...
Correct. Same with the jail, so CERT is the jails SWAT team, and that is limited to the numbers. Everything's got limited numbers. One of the reasons that we started this whole process, and Dree can speak to this because she gets the excellent reviews, but one of the things is room for growth. And supervision is one of those only room for growth within, in our environment right now. Minus if you want to volunteer your time and get paid, you're getting paid to be on SWAT, but you're not getting anything additional. And so we looked at, you know, how do we create other opportunities? How do we get devoted people? Because like a field training officer, for instance, you get certified for that, there's ongoing training for that. We depend upon those folks to do frontline training of our folks, both road and jail, and to keep a quality person, so you're not revolving door that because they get burnt out, because training new people is not always the funnest thing in the world to do. And so we was looking at this as giving employees other opportunities that was also a benefit to them to step up and to do these other things and be proud of doing it, not, you know, it's, it's to help with that.
Benefit to the county for them to step up and to them to do the job. Like this, this week, we're doing our annual 24 hours training. We have to have 24 hours training every year. So we've got firearms training going on right now, we've got EVOC training going on right now, we've got CERT training going on right now, incident command training going on. So all this stuff, you have to have a state-certified instructor come in and talk to you about that. And these guys are the ones that step up and do that, put together all the powerpoints and their training, and we go out and drive the cars and do the firearms and the defensive tactics, and all that is stuff that they have to learn and do on their own time to get ready. So that was kind of a...
And same with the certified instructors. So when I speak field training officer, a certified instructor is a field training officer, so that person's actually required, you've got two certifications to just be the field training officer. And there's also an hour requirement to the state of Indiana to be that certified, so I'm a state-certified instructor, and I have to instruct a certain amount of hours per year and report that to the state to even keep that certification. And that's not just specific to your department, so sometimes you even have to train outside your department to get those hours to even maintain that. So in our case, we make field training officers also be state-certified instructors because they're also doing the training for the staff as well. So there, most of this has a lot, I mean, even the critical incident management, you So there, most of this has a lot, I mean, even the critical incident management, you know, that's a week-long course. You have to do things to maintain that. So those, really, everything has other strings attached besides just saying, oh, well, you went to school minus the education. And I truly feel, I don't have a college education, but I know that I've got lots of employees that do, that the job didn't require them to have it, but they have it. And we looked at it as a benefit to us when we hired those people. However, we said, well, thanks for having it, but sorry that we can't do anything to help you pay for it. And, you know, we get more interns within the jail from the high school that's trying to get criminal justice. I've got one girl that went through an internship with us. She went to school, Vincennes, with the hopes of coming back. She did. She's now a field training officer. She now has a degree, and she's now a state certified instructor. We benefited by being able to, to recruit people like that.
Right.
I don't think that, for, for me personally, there's not even a question to that, right? I think where the rub lies is, you know, if I were to go and apply for an administrative and clerical position at the, at the jail, right? And I have a bachelor's degree, that that would automatically give me the extra three thousand dollars a year because I have a ba- bachelor's degree. I think if I'm, if I'm hearing what I'm hearing in the county, right? That's, that's where, you know, there are folks in other departments saying, well, I have a bachelor's degree and, you know, you know, I'm, I'm just going to throw it out there, you know, and I understand, and I think it's great that, look, my husband's a department head and he goes to bat for his department, and you only get what you ask for, right?
And I think that's where we're at today, that other people didn't ask and we did, and that's where we're standing today.
Maintain these people, do a good job, look out for our people.
I understand.
And we did.
And I think that's admirable.
If you want to do it?
Yeah.
Here's the mic.
I have a mic. No, no, I get that, I get that. But I do think that other, other departments, and I'm just gonna throw it out there because, I mean, that's why we're here, right, is to talk about it. And I just think that other departments are like, well, wait a minute. We did try to get our folks more money when, you know, we asked for a four percent increase and not a three. And, and so I just, I hear, I hear, you know, what other departments are saying and why there might be, you know, some questions about it.
Oh, and I totally understand that.
I know you do.
Absolutely. And we did, we, we did. You told us no.
You're qualifying it and saying it, right.
We want you to do this to get that.
But any consideration you give us, we'll appreciate.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yep.
You did that we-
You already did it. We had further conversation. We're still pleading our case, so.
Did I do it, or do I need to do it?
Yep. So we will table this for a vote. Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, and we all approve. Okay. Thank you.
If you need anything, call us.
All right, we will. We have questions, we will. I think the commissioners, didn't the commissioners have something else? Kenny, didn't you have something for us? Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna open this up and get us started. We passed this morning, blessed and passing on to you guys tonight with the request from the surveyor's office going from a paid benefit employee full-time to a contractual. And this was brought up earlier on, and it was no action taken on it, I know. The contract was not correct, what it needed to be, didn't meet the, the test according to what Dan was saying at the time. And I just wanted to, we've been working with Jim Wisco since on that contract. Jim went ahead and updated it himself and got it done. I'm gonna let Jim speak on the legal part here in just a minute. But I'm gonna just speak, and I'm gonna ask Rita speak, and also Terry Brock, just so you guys can answer. We've got a few of us that could answer questions. But my big thing is, Bill's, and I, I always hated him when I was on the council sixteen years. Take that employee out of it. It's a position, it's not the person in that position. It's a position. And I'm really bad about doing that now since I'm the commissioner, and I apologize for that. But it's gonna benefit both parties. It's gonna benefit him by being able to utilize his PERF, by paying for his daughter's, help pay for his daughter's college. So also gonna benefit us because we're not gonna be paying benefits anymore. You've already appropriated the money in that budget for this position. Except it would just be from an employee's position to a contractual. He does have a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge. All the years I was on the exec board for Anasen, nine years total, I'd say Bill's probably one of the top three in the state. I mean, he knows and has the experience as well, a management and MS four. So that's something that I would hate to see us lose.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Kenny. I'm gonna just, in case, we've got some new people here. So what we had back in November, we had an employee in the surveyor's office that was going to retire. But he, he brought a lot of knowledge to the table and, and was a great employee for the county. And so the surveyor asked that a contractual agreement be brought up where he be, continued to work for the county as a contractor, but not as a county employee. When that was brought to us back in November, there was some angst over the IRS's description of what is an employee and what is a contractor. And as it was presented at that time, some of the council members had an issue with that, that really wasn't a contractor. So I think-
So did our auditor too. I mean, it was our auditor and Judge Williams at the time that spoke about it.
Exactly. So we had a judge in the audience that said, no, this isn't gonna pass the sniff test. And, and it's, so we kind of backed off of it, and we did not make a decision at that time. So that's kind of why it's come full circle. They've adjusted some of this on the contractual agreement. But, and so it's been brought before us again. The, the bad thing I had was this was dropped on me at three o'clock this afternoon.
I understand.
I had no time to read it. I had no time to ask questions. And I don't play that way. So I, I gotta delve into things, and I didn't have a chance to do that. And then when you called me this afternoon, Kenny, I, I explained that, that I, I wanted a little better, more time to, to work on it. So I did delve into it a little further, and I still have questions, that I still don't think it's gonna pass the test. Things I pointed out, and, and you may be able to address them for me, but first part was on the second page under C, or wait, maybe it's third page. Third page under C, contractor shall have the right to use a county-owned vehicle at any time contractor is actively engaged in a task or task to which is obligated or required pursuant to the agreement. So if he's a contractor, there's not many contractors I can call to my house that I'm gonna give him a truck to use. So that, that does not sound like a contractor. The other thing I had was on how he's paid. Contractor shall submit to the surveyor an invoice in a format reasonably agreed to by the parties. So are you gonna get an invoice every month and pay it? How, how's he gonna be paid?
Yeah, it'd be on a monthly basis.
So he's not clocking in or anything?
No.
Okay. Then on over on section miscellaneous provisions.
What page?
Next to the last.
I'm gonna let Mr. Wisco answer the legal questions on the contract, because he can answer that a lot better than I can.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be, and it's gonna be, we left you the option on the pay, whether you want to go ahead and put the lump amount that's in the line item, even though it's been already spent out of a little bit, or go ahead and break it down to five thousand twenty a month.
So he's gonna get that no matter how often he works for us, for that month?
That's what I'm saying. No, it would, we left you guys that option because Terry's already spent out January already. He's gonna be spending out the end of February. Bill's last day will be February twenty-eighth. He's already filed for PERF, and that will be his last day working for the county. And I'm gonna let Bill and Terry address that part of it.
Under compensation, it says fees, surveyor shall pay contractor at the hourly rate of five thousand twenty dollars per month. So that is an hourly rate, or is it a monthly rate?
That's a monthly rate. The five thousand twenty is a monthly-
We need to get rid of that hourly then. And this is on page two, at the very bottom. Yeah, it must be, mine must have got on a different page somehow. Yeah, mine's up here. Yes, I did see that too. That, I had that circled. Expenses, surveyor shall reimburse contractor for certain continuing education expenses incurred by the contractor. Again, if they're a contractor, I'm not paying their expenses for their, their continuing education. And then it went on to say that they can't go anywhere else. We're their only employee. I, I mean, their only contractual agreement, non-compete. What contractor can't go somewhere else and do a job? I mean, it just doesn't reek of a contractor to me. And that's just me, and I'm one vote, and I'm gonna be a no. Because I just see this coming back to bite us by the IRS.
The, the question that I had in reading it was, at, at this point, right now, he is being covered by our insurance as far as the liability.
That was in my questions too, Brian.
And it, is he going to go out and get his own policies, liability policies, E and O policies? So that we're, we're not covering his E and O liability?
But if he's not allowed to work for anybody else, then-
Yeah.
He's not our employee, so he, we wouldn't have our benefits.
Well, that's true, but-
Kind of county vehicle, is he covered under that insurance?
And I will say, I was contracted with the commissioners from ninety-seven till twenty-fourteen, December thirty-first of fourteen. I drove a county vehicle. I had to give McConnell's and have copies of my insurance and give copies of my driver's license every year. And I mean, that's just some, and all the employees that drive vehicles, they gotta do the same thing with driver's license.
And I think what Brian was asking about being-
But I was contracted while them years.
Is he going to be bonded and insured, or, you know, what, what's the liability if he were injured on one of our jobs?
Yeah, because if he's driving our vehicle, has an accident, who's responsible?
I'm gonna let the attorney answer that because I'm not legal, counsel.
In the state of Indiana, insurance follows the vehicle, not the driver. So it's first gonna be the county. And then if it exceeds the county's limits, it could go to his insurance, but not likely it's gonna, he's gonna carry limits above that. So we won't get into insurance. So, yeah, did you have more for us, Jim, that are-
My voice was a little bit better this morning and seems to have faded again. I'll try.
Sorry you've been sick.
So pointing out, or just responding to a couple of things that mainly you can point it out. First of all, one, I, I do think that the language or the wording in the non-compete on the top of the last page could probably be improved. I think the intent, or my intent in drafting it, was not to preclude or limit him from engaging in other employment that utilizes his professional skills and abilities, but to limit him from doing so, basically for another government agency in the same sort of capacity. So he could be hired in private market for services related to his education and experience, I think was the intent. Not that he be exclusively limited and beholden only to the county. And I think certainly to clarify that intent in that paragraph would make sense because I'd agree it doesn't read as that way, or it's not clear anyway.
Could it be eliminated?
I, I think it, I think it arguably could be eliminated. I don't think that it, I don't think that particularly given that it, it speaks to or addresses the concern of his availability to perform the services required enlisted, starting paragraph three on page one. And so if his engagement of another, in another contract of any kind with anybody would inhibit or prohibit his sufficient delivery of the services, then it doesn't matter essentially who that other party would be. So I would argue, I, I don't see why it couldn't be.
We, we recently hired a contractor to do public, public relations for the county. I mean, how does this compare to that? Well, I mean, I would think they would need to be similar.
Or not providing that person a vehicle, I don't think. I mean, there's-
As far as how, I, I don't know that I've seen that contract, so I can't off cuff say, in theory, overarching thousand-foot view, I mean, essentially nothing would need to vary. I think that all of these things are fact-sensitive inquiries. And if you look at both US Supreme Court analysis as well as Indiana court analysis, it is all based upon a litany Indiana courts establish essentially ten factors. Federal courts more like fifteen or twenty, in which they repeatedly say there's no bright line test. It's not if you meet six of twelve, if you meet four of ten. Just because this and this does not mean that you have a certain amount of control over the employee or the contractor such that it would mean one or the other. Essentially, it's a fact-sensitive inquiry. However, importantly, importantly, the Indiana courts do point out that, that the, that while it's fact-sensitive and the courts will consider all ten of those factors, that the extent of the control, or lack thereof, is the most important factor. And in looking at that, the court defines pretty simply, "An employee or servant is one who, quote, 'is employed to perform services in the affairs of another and who with respect to the physical conduct and the performance of the services is subject to the other's control or right to control.' Whereas an independent contractor generally controls the method and details of his task and is answerable to the principal as to the results only." And I think that's the crux of this analysis. I think that's how the crux of this analysis would, would be viewed in any sort of situation with the courts. And so do the issue of the car. I don't think that that, I think that's certainly one of several things courts would consider additionally. Along with that, the courts generally refer to it as tools or resources. And I think in some ways, that may be one of the weaker components in this analysis because unlike, I don't know if you referenced an HVAC or somebody coming to your house, or they may have a whole ton of tools. I don't know if the same thing applies here. The fact that a vehicle is available for use doesn't inherently dictate the decision one way or the other. I think that Indiana courts would look to the extent of the control or lack of control on behalf of the principal over the employee or contractor in, as the driving factor among the several in making that determination. I think that it's also important to remember, first of all, that, I don't think Judge Williams is here.
That one is important to remember.
But, I mean, he was not, and it kind of became humorous after a few minutes. But the, I think it started with the fact that one of the things that was erroneously in that prior version of the contract and I just had, like, it really was barely kind of, had reviewed it briefly, didn't draft it, and, and only had a minimal handle of everything in play here. That, and I think what got that going in part correctly was the fact that it included that the contractor would have control or authority or supervision or something over employees, which certainly would smack exactly opposite in the face of, of, of an independent contractor. That was inadvertently in there. That's been removed. I think that's kind of what started that conversation incorrectly. And, and Judge Williams held court accordingly. I think that in looking at, let's see, there was one other thing I thought you pointed out.
Reimbursement of expenses.
Similarly, I think that, for one, that it's limited to only, there's no reimbursement of any other expenses included, which was an issue raised in analyzing that issue and expenses generally.
You're talking for continuing education?
Yeah.
Page two.
Let me just-
What's gonna determine if he works twenty hours a week or sixty hours a week?
Ultimately, how this is supposed to work is him and his judgment with his ex, his experience and expertise doing this sort of work, knowing that he has an obligation to fulfill the services that he agrees to fulfill in the agreement. So that, going back to the extent of the control, quite frankly, if he can fulfill the services the first two or three weeks of the month, he could do nothing the last half of the month. And it would be his prerogative to make that decision. he could do nothing the last half of the month, and it would be his prerogative to make that decision.
And it would be kept out at sixty thousand.
I mean, that meets the contractor guidelines. I agree with that.
I think he'll fulfill whatever we need fulfilled on a month-to-month basis.
Unlike, you know, another distinction in this push and pull is he would have recourse theoretically against the county and the county against him for breach contract, which is atypical or more typical of an independent contractor relationship than an employee who typically wouldn't. You raise the issue of the manner of pay, and I think that, you know, maybe or maybe not, that section could be improved slightly. But I think it reflects the intent that, not like an employee, not hourly, where the same day everybody else gets their paychecks with taxes withheld, that he submits an invoice, whether it's because he worked thirty hours this week, or he's worked seventy hours this month, or whatever it is. And from time to time is paid.
Not to exceed the total amount of the sixty thousand, five forty-two, four, two forty-two annually.
So would it be best to assign an hourly rate rather than a monthly figure?
I think that the monthly, as a cap, is reasonable. I think that probably an hourly rate component of that to account for the circumstance in which he doesn't, you know, he's not gonna work the same amount of hours theoretically every month.
On the mores, we'll already see that the contract that we have with our administrator is, it gives X amount for X amount of hours with an hourly rate if they go above and beyond those hours. I'm not saying we need to do that, but that's how it is handled in other situations. It's more defined. Here's the hourly rate, not to exceed. And I'm still sort of stuck on, we have another contractor who is similar in that this contractor is offering their professional services. And we have this other contractor with a contract. But I have no idea consistency-wise, what this one looks like compared to that.
I presume it's identical. I'm kidding, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, if we're offering contracts through the county, I would hope that they are, that we're offering people similar terms and making sure that they're following the same rules.
I wouldn't disagree with that. And like I said before, I can't speak directly to that with, however, I think while, I would, like I said, I would agree. I think that there's probably also circumstance in which they would inherently vary or differ to some degree or another based on the services sought after by the county in the context of the PR contractor versus sought after here. But notwithstanding, they should still have to beat those factors, and it should be similar.
I can't accept a contract that doesn't spell out the insurance aspect of it, though. I mean, it's got to spell out where the E and O and liability fall and who's covering that if there's an issue.
Well, I think that the very nature of an independent contractor is that they are responsible for, I mean, somebody had said, in an independent contractor situation, a county obviously no longer is responsible for traditional insurance and benefits and those sort of things, but also negligence and liability and those sort of things as they would be an employee. There's a waiver and indemnification clause, but if the request or suggestion, I think, I would find well-taken to include that an independent contractor provide reasonable sum of liability insurance. I would find that to be reasonable inclusion.
If you took out the use of, the option to use a county-owned vehicle and this contractor would provide their own vehicle, that would eliminate some of this. Does it take away all the concerns people have? And is that an option of this contractor?
Hi, guys, how you doing? This is, I'm never here at night, I usually see you during the day. So I can probably count on my hands how many times in twenty-three years I've been in front of you at night. You got a lot of questions, you know, you mentioned our auditor. We've been working with Dan since June. We did exactly what Dan asked me to do. I got the emails to prove it. And in the meeting, he changed. And I can't tell you why. He didn't come to me about that. I would have been at that meeting, but I didn't know it was even gonna be heard. So, and I wanted to apologize about the short notice. We've been working with Kenny. We talked to Linda on the thirteenth of January. I don't think you got our letter, I thought you did, maybe you didn't, so.
Kenny discussed it with me?
Yeah.
I was waiting for the contract.
Yeah, yeah, so, and we had trouble with the contract, so Jim's been sick. So we just need their contracts back. And it wasn't intentional at all. We're in a time crunch.
Why, I mean, why are you in a time crunch?
Because Bill is retiring twenty-eighth of this month. Because that's when he can retire, and he has to retire then. Yeah, you know, as far as the auditor, we did everything we were asked to do from our auditor. If he'd asked me to change anything, we would have changed it, you know. That's just, that's watering at the bridge now. As far as the truck, you know, I know when Kenny was plan director, he got to use any vehicle in the county when he was under contract. So, but we can change that, we can always go to pay mileage, which, we can do that. You know, I've got several contracts. I've got contracts with engineers all over the state. And, you know, they all have a set fee, you know, you were asking that. They all have a set fee. And so they give me an invoice, we pay, if it's five thousand dollars, that's what we pay, that much. But if it goes over the contract agreement, then they have per hour after that. So, you know, we've got engineers, we've got contractors that work on our ditches, we've got tree guys, they all come under just a contract, a regular contract. You know, Bill wants to do this so he can send his daughter to college. And Bill is valuable. My office does the MS four for the commissioners. I've done it for twenty years now, I think, Kenny? I don't have to do that. I can just throw up my hands, say, guys, you've gotta do that. Well, you're talking a whole new department. You're talking seventy, eighty thousand dollars for someone to run it, you're talking about inspectors. We do it for sixty thousand dollars a year. Henders County's five hundred thousand. So, you know, if the commissioners do not fulfill the MS four, Mr. Collier and Kim, you'll be in orange. They can arrest us if we don't take care of it.
If he hadn't been interested in continuing this in a contractual way, though, what would have been plan B?
Pardon me?
What would you have done if he was just, he's retired, he's done, he walks away?
If he retired and walked away, it'd have to come back as for one more position, because Bill does two positions. He does my work and he does the MS four work. So even, you know, if you decide not to, and all I'm asking is to transfer his pay now into a contract. I'm not asking for additional, I'm not asking for anything like that. So, you know, if Bill, if we can't work out a deal with Bill, you know, we'll advertise it. But we're not gonna get someone with thirty-three years' experience, we're not gonna get someone. Bill was the first, when I.D.M. went out and started doing their permits, he was the first audit in the state. So they based their audits off of what Bill did in Tepanew County. I.D.M. calls Bill and asks him to go look at sites for him, because they can't get out there. Bill reviews everything that comes into my office. He saves the contractors thousands and thousands of dollars because we don't have to ship it out. You know, not only that, Bill works with everyone, all the contractors in the county, he works with them, he helps them. Any citizen that walks in the door, we'll go out and look at their sites. The contract will state that Bill, I will put down the terms of what Bill has to do, and Bill will do everything that he does now. Not only, he's not only gonna do the stormwater stuff, but he'll still help me with my section.
Well, and I don't think any of us are questioning his abilities and his knowledge and education on all of it. I mean, he's a great candidate, and we'd love to keep him. I think our question is, we just don't want to be bit coming out of this as not, as it not being qualified as a contractor. And that.
You know, we had one lawyer write our original one, because that's what we were told to do. And then once our, once we come back, we asked Dan again, he said, we'll give it to the commissioners and get to Jim and let him review it. And that's what we did. And, you know, with Jim being sick, and it kinda got, I don't know what happened, why, how it got, where it got to. It should have never got to where it got to, it was gotten to. But we relied on our attorneys to write our contract properly. I don't know that, I'm not an attorney, I didn't stay in a Holiday Inn or anything like that, so. You know, we're just trying to work out deals where we can keep Bill and get our work done.
By the end of the month.
By the end of the month. And that's the problem, is by the end of the month.
It is, and that we received it at three o'clock this afternoon. I mean, I didn't even know it was on the.
And I, we apologize for that, because I didn't know.
We don't get a contract until the next meeting, which is the first Monday of that month? I mean, we're talking about a week's difference?
Sure. Real quick, to, I think, focus this a little differently. So commissioners are the executive. The reason to start of the path that it did is because you all as a body have to be comfortable, because, you know, this year, Terry could transfer money, but what about next year? The whole point in making sure you guys got brought into this process was that we get to a solution that everyone's comfortable with. They have to sign the contract. We gave that to you guys because we want input on what it, what it'll take to make you guys comfortable with the process. And so, you know, to your point, you guys have raised a lot of good ones. Those, that contract can be modified, you know, however you guys want to see it shaped, and then the commissioners can approve it later. They just don't want to approve a contract that you guys are gonna say, whoa, hold on, pump the brakes here. And so I think that's what we want to focus on, not contract to be approved by this body, but what would the contract need to be changed to make this body comfortable? And to your point, Kim, you know, if we have to hire a new department, we're gonna pay a lot more than an IRS fine
And that was just, yeah.
in the unlikelihood that that ever happened. So to me, it's, you know, we talked about this the first time, is what's the risk reward?
I think you've heard some really good concerns here from several council members. And, but I'm certainly convinced that we would be getting great value out of this. I mean, I trust Terry's judgment, and we don't want to have to go out and hire someone as a new employee. It sounds like that would be two positions, and so I'd really like to see us, we can come up with what changes we want to this language and then give the commissioners the ability to go ahead, because from a budget standpoint, it seems like this is gonna be a good deal for the county. We just need to make sure that we're comfortable with the language in this contract, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, no problem with Bill, none at all.
Yeah, we understand. I just want to make sure you guys didn't feel the pressure that you've got to address the contract tonight. I mean, I would, if I were in your shoes, appoint somebody to review any changes that these guys make.
Get up there, Jim, get up there with us.
I just want to go on the record to tell Kim that I snore, so if we're both in orange jumpsuits, you're not gonna be able to sleep.
A good point, and the supervisory language was stricken.
Yes, it was.
Because that was a huge flag. That's what began the conversation.
And I can address that a little bit, because our original attorney that did it, she asked us to send her what Bill does for us now, so we made sure it got in there. And all Bill did was take out, you know, the study you did, we just pulled that out and sent it to her, and it got stuck in there. And if you read further back in the contract, it said he could not supervise, it was in the writing.
Contradicted itself, yeah.
It contradicted itself. So that was just an oversight, that was.
So Chip, is it your recommendation that we just go down this now and make verbiage changes that we're comfortable with?
Yes, whatever it is.
Well, Brian.
Idea of what changes we want to see as a council.
Well, I'd like, Brian, you're a, bring your CPA knowledge here. And does it pass, and Chip, does it pass the IRS criteria for being a self, I mean, a separate contractor from the county? Or does it, if they're looking at it, are they gonna say that guy's a county employee?
It's a lot better than the original drafting. I think there's eleven, eleven points, eleven tests. Here's my, here's my recommendation, because you're looking at a whole different department. You're looking at at least two positions. That position will then need a secretary to answer the phone when those two people are out.
Yeah, always.
Long story short, is because, and I apologize about the timeframe, Chip or, and I or Melissa, one of, two of us can get together and work on the changes. If we deem that we need additional changes, it's critical to keep him in this position. I have no desire, I joke about moving to jail. The probability of them sending us to jail is slim, and we all know that. But it is what we hang over to enforce the rules. So we got rules that we have to comply with, and at the same time, we're looking at other set of rules to keep us compliant with a whole different governing body, the Internal Revenue Service. I'm comfortable moving forward at this time, knowing that this is, this isn't, you know, we can change this contract, I didn't tell you. We can fine tune this. I just have no desire to take over, I'm not qualified to take over MS four. I'm not, Terry doesn't have the time to do that. We're gonna have to have other meetings to set up a whole different department. It will become a complete mess.
Nightmare.
Well, and one to.
And in between, so this handle, getting rid of that mess and the mess that we might create through the verbiage, as you can see, two attorneys didn't even agree, two different drafts. And then when you bring in the opinion of the auditor, the past auditor, he didn't agree with the two attorneys. So the purpose of us coming up here tonight is for this body, your body, to be comfortable with this.
And we.
We need to move forward with this position, this contractual position. If you would like to see future language change within the contract, we have time to do that. We just don't have, because you guys only meet once, once a month, we're out of time.
Thank you.
One thing that's not been said here tonight is, not only is Bill's position, this position vital to Morgan County, but your municipalities throughout our county. Gary Oaks will be one to praise how much this is important to the city of Martinsville and their projects as well. So it's not just a Morgan County benefit, but it's the benefit of the county.
Brooklyn.
Exactly.
Well, and we appreciate you bringing it to us, because as we all know, you guys can enter into the contracts. We really don't have any say in that. You can do that without our approval. So we do appreciate that you brought it to us and let our concerns be heard.
So we think I'm making changes tonight, recommendations, are we thinking about?
I mean, I'm not the one that voiced the concerns, so I'll leave that up to you guys to voice your concerns.
Meeting? No.
I don't think we need a special meeting, I think we just.
Changing it to a contractual position with the contract to be further defined?
It's good wording, good verbiage.
Bottom line is, approve the contract scenario.
Approve the position to be changed from an employee to a contractual with the contract to come. And do we want to put a timeframe on that?
Well, the commissioners will meet here, their second meeting, I'm thinking they might like to. They might like to have something by that meeting, if I had to guess, which is two weeks from.
There's a part of me wants to say, take out the truck, that we don't supply a vehicle. But I also like that if they're on county people's property, that it is a marked vehicle, that they're doing county business, so that.
I was just asking the question about liability. I don't, I don't dispute that he shouldn't have access to that vehicle. I just wanted to make sure, you know, how that liability is covered.
It's gonna come on the county, it's gonna be a county claim.
Yeah.
And it'd be covered.
The auto liabilities county at that point.
But you're under special circumstances.
Kenny, I wouldn't, I wouldn't admit that in a meeting.
I'm not sure that would get approved today, Kenny.
This to really reevaluate some things here.
Oh, we're gonna throw a state appellate court judge under the bus.
Commissioners, meet. When do you meet again?
Two weeks from today.
Do you just want us to, each of us to email, you want us to email Josh with our concerns? So you just want us to, each of us to email, you want us to email Josh with our concerns of what we feel that needs to be addressed in that contract?
I mean, here's the positive side of this. You have, we're not bringing somebody new into this. You have a guy with a proven track record of doing the job, who is trustworthy on a daily basis. Just tweak the language the way we want it and move forward with it.
Yeah, Bill's been with us almost 15 years now, so.
Right, Chip? I mean, Melissa?
Yes, I agree with the correct of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And what, Brian? Yeah. So I don't know how you want to frame that into a motion, but.
Verbiage there. You want to put that in the form of a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve changing the position from an employee to a contract employee with the contract to be defined.
I don't like contract employee. Say contractual agreement.
It won't be an employee. It is.
Contract.
A contractual agreement.
Contractual agreement, okay.
Yeah. He will be treated just like all my other, my engineers, anywhere else. He will be a contractual engineer.
Yeah.
I mean, not engineer, but contractual. I think Vicki said, the reimbursement for continuing education and that survey. I have contracts for my services for the county. I'm reimbursed for continuing education for county-related things. I think it's well-established that no one exerts control over me with any success.
That's true. That's true.
Wait a minute.
All right.
That is really true.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor.
Second to that motion, by Brian.
My gavel. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Culp, and a second by Councilman Keller. All those in favor of the motion to agree to the contractual agreement to be amended as presented, I think I kind of said that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries seven to zero. We got there.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I've got one other comment I'd like to make. Can I have a comment real quick?
What?
I want to thank the commissioners, and I want to thank Grant on that right of way for that corner. We have been dealing with that for 20 years.
On Bottom Road?
Yes. I started, Rod Bray was our attorney when we started this, and, yeah, we've done surveys. We've been out there. We've been threatened, be shot at. It's been quite an ordeal, and I want to thank them for taking the step to fix it. It really needed to be fixed.
Good point.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Is there anything else? Oh, we have our coroner coming up. I think, did everybody get a copy of their, his report for this month? He gave that out at the beginning of the meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen. I just want to thank you for this past action, because this was a situation, it was given to us late in the day. Many of us didn't get to time to really pick it apart like we wanted to and really absorb it. It's a good feeling to know that we've worked through this and we're going to make it happen. So, thank you.
I agree. Work well together.
Hi, Mike. Bill, come up here. We talked about you all night. We want to hear from you. This is one of the greatest county employees we got.
He's a contractual employee.
It should be.
I'm still an employee. I'm still an employee. First of all, I apologize for the late notice.
It's not your fault.
And I really appreciate everybody taking the time to work through this tonight. It really means a lot to me, and I look forward to working for the county.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Have you, Bill?
Appreciate it.
Hi, kids.
Hello.
Hi, Dad.
I am the elder statesman.
Tell us about you.
Previously, and this morning at the commissioners' meeting, I presented you with my 2022 numbers. And just to explain some things, the numbers you see for 2022 was a 37% increase over 2021. The, and it wasn't a lot of fatality accidents. You'll notice 25 overdoses. There was 15 suicides. Had a homicide. One person was huffing the canned air stuff. Just, and of course, there's the fentanyl question. I'll make it short, but I need help. And PRN people don't get it, because they work full-time jobs. They're not dedicated to the coroner's office. I'm dedicated to this job. Two times, I even asked for increases for my salary, and I didn't get the increases I requested, but I didn't look at it and say, well, fine, I'll just take my toys and go home. I don't work that way. I am dedicated to this county and to the people of this county, because God's called me to this. This is what my calling is, is to help people at their worst possible moment. Folks, people are dying from blood clots. They're dying in their 40s and 50s of natural deaths because of sedentary lifestyle, whatever it might be. But we, as a county, we, as a governing body, have got to be prepared for what's coming. I'm not trying to come up here and be a prophet or a gloom and doom, but me, myself, and my one deputy that works with me happens to be my wife, we're pretty much going on all of them. And not because my PRN people, but they have full-time jobs. One has had bilateral knee surgery that created some difficulties and had some complications or something. There's more and more people that are in the fire service and EMS, and I thank God for the Sheriff's Department, Mooresville, Martinsville PD, the fire and the EMS people. They come to, they help me so much. But I would, I really need a full-time and a part-time person. This office is, needs to be an office. It's not a mom-and-pop operation out of my house. I have an office set up in my house, and I have an office, thank God for y'all, getting the morgue suite, and that's awesome. But I'm only one person. And now I have the Department of Health sending emails and trying to take this away from the drive system and trying to get more responsibility, because all the Indiana Department of Health wants is to justify their existence to continue to get their grant money, and we don't get that money. So, I just really need some help from y'all. I'm not on the agenda. I'm not offering a motion for anything, but I'm just letting y'all know that it's getting worse instead of better. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything to come before the council this evening? Our next meeting, I believe, is, gosh, I've got to check my calendar. Do you have it down? Another March? Yes. So it'll be Monday, March 6th will be our next meeting here. If there's nothing else to come before the council this evening, I look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Brian. If it's seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.